She had some surgery and it was successful and she is totally okay except her voice is a little weaker, so.
I've been smoking three packs of Jent.
So let's all just show her a little bit of grace for tonight's meeting and also I want to let everyone know that Alderwoman Zazada reached out to me that she would not be able to attend this meeting and she reached out in advance as well. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and call the regular city council meeting of May 27, 2025 to order. Roll call, please.
Zazada. Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Seven, present.
All right, the meeting is in order and then moving on to agenda item B, pledge of allegiance. Captain Hyvee, would you please give us the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gentry. All right, moving on to agenda item C, approval of the agenda. Would take a motion to approve the agenda as is.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Carlson, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven, I.
The agenda has been approved. Moving on to agenda item D, presentations. We have none. Agenda item E, public participation. We have none. And then agenda item F, appointments. Number one, appointing Greg Perkins to the Finance Advisory Committee for a four-year term through December 31, 2029. Can I have a motion to approve Greg's appointment?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Powell, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven, I.
All right, Alderwoman, or former Alderman Perkins has been approved. Then moving on to agenda item G, the consent agenda. I want to take a motion to make a modification in the consent agenda to remove item number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of May 12, 2025. And then, well, we got to do that first, right? Okay, so that's my motion to remove number one. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. I guess roll call on that.
Smith.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven, I.
All right, so the consent agenda has been modified to remove number one. Number one, then, I would like a motion to bring number one forward with, for approval, but with a modification that the, in that agenda, during the consent agenda, it was stated that Alderman Verbic made the motion and Alderman Verbic made a second. That needs to be changed to Alderman Verbic made the motion and Alderman Powell made the second for last meeting's agenda on May 12. Can I have a motion to make that modification?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Powell. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none. Roll call on that, please.
Carlson.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven, I.
All right, the minutes of the regular city council meeting of May 12, 2025 have been approved with those modifications. Then agenda item G, again, will be accounts payable and payroll, May 27, 2025, in the amount of $3,786,991.74. And three, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, April 2025. Can I have a motion to approve that modified consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Carlson, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven, I.
All right, the modified consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to number eight, or letter H, public hearings. We have none. Letter I, consideration. Number one, consideration of a supplemental 2025 round of human services funding. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Powell. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As I indicated in my background, this agenda item has been prompted by contact at a number of city offices, including mine, have had with local social service agencies regarding their ability to continue their, their level of services because of various revenue challenges and, and also higher demand. And so I thought it was appropriate to bring this consideration forward. I've laid out some background for you that talks about our human services funding in general. I would note that in, in recent years, the council has, has augmented the annual allocation. We're at 225,000 now. But we've had some discussion, did recently when we were putting the, the current budget together in the fall of '24. I know Alderman Verbic and some others have suggested that maybe we could look someday at pumping that up a little bit. Well, the occasion presents itself now. And we could wait till the new budget is approved and, and in operation, but that would be another eight months roughly. And so the, the appeals that I have heard are sincere, from what I can tell, and, and I think need to be addressed. And so I've laid out what I call a supplemental human services allocation. It would bring us up to the level for the year of 300,000. That involves an additional 75,000. In that, we're in the middle of, we're getting, we're past the first quarter, halfway through the second quarter of 2025. My thought was that rather than opening us up to everyone, well, first of all, we would open, my proposition to you to discuss is we would open up to everyone who received a grant, but further, I guess, refinement on that point is that we would focus on the, the most elemental needs, which would be housing, food, and care for the elderly and disabled. Now, there are a number of the 23 odd agencies that we have funded that would, would meet those criteria and there are some that would not. And obviously some choices have to be made. If you have 75,000, you want to make a, a difference. So that's what's before you tonight. I would suggest if you want to proceed with this that I bring back a budget amendment that would make it so at the next meeting and that we, we have a fairly tight timeframe for the application, say a couple of weeks. I know some agencies have actually approached us over a month ago and, and they're concerned about what would happen after mid-year. Some of them are closely aligned with state funding parameters which go with the state budget year. So that's what I've posed to you. I think it's, one other note I might, might want to make, your desks have a revised general fund budget spreadsheet. Wouldn't you know, this agenda came out before noon on Thursday and later in the day on Thursday, I learned that auditors had decided to make one more tweak to the numbers that are going to come to you in one of the next meetings concerning expenses in the area of leases, vehicle leases and the like. And so I made the adjustment. I thought I was firm on what I presented you, but I wasn't. So it's about a $300,000 adjustment. It was an oversight on others' parts.
First, we, Nate Kloster from Voluntary Action Center, just wanted to come up and say a few quick words. He, representing Voluntary Action Center, has been a recipient of the human services funding and I believe just wanted to give a little bit of a perspective of the impact that it makes.
Yeah, thank you, Cohen and City Council, for letting me share just some insight as one of the agencies. I recognize this is an application process. I don't expect what I'm going to share is giving back a shoe-in on, on these funds, but I do feel the city support is incredibly helpful and needed. So what I'm going to share is certainly just a VAC, set of VAC information, but I know many other agencies are in need. So I'm going to rattle off some statistics to you and hopefully you'll at least get the idea of the situation. Forty-four percent of our Meals on Wheels clients reside in the city of DeKalb. With unprecedented, unprecedented, can't say the word, unprecedented demand, back in November, we had to put a cap on our Meals on Wheels program and start a waiting list. Today, we are serving 360 clients, which equates to approximately 90,000 meals a year. We currently have 85 people on our waiting list, which translates into about 19,000 potential meals. Fifty-one percent of them reside, reside in the city of DeKalb. Fifty-five percent of our recipients receive a meal for a year or longer. It would cost $155,000 a year to take all of these people off our waiting list. And that's just to get coverage of where we stand today. But what does the future hold? Seventeen percent of the population in the city of DeKalb are age 60-plus, and that's at least from an age standpoint what would qualify you for our Meals on Wheels service. Eighty-eight percent of the population we serve are 65 or older. 2025 will be the highest number of people reaching retirement age of 65 in our country's history. Those at the beginning of the baby boomer generation are now 79. For someone born in 1946, the life expectancy at birth was around 64 for males and 69 for females. Today, someone born in 1946 is now 83 for males and 86 for females. Thirty-four percent of the population we serve are 75 or older. That said, I recognize there are a number of agencies that are equally deserving and in need of the additional funding, and I just speak as a voice of one of those agencies. From a VAC perspective, the needs are great now and will be greater in the future. The surge that VAC is now beginning to experience is only going to increase as a generation bubble continues to age and live longer. This is money well spent and is just the beginning as more challenges lie ahead. And thank you for giving me this opportunity. It may, I may have overwhelmed you with a number of statistics, but thank you for your support. And if I'm honest, I see more conversations in our future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, I also wanted to comment, Alderman Verbic brought this up a number of meetings ago, like the city manager recognized, so just appreciate, you know, you bringing that up, causing us to look at it. Obviously, all the inputs the city manager has been getting from the other nonprofits is why this is in front of us now as a consideration. So any comments or questions?
Just thank you very much for making this a timely endeavor. The need is extensive and the need is now. So this really means a lot, getting out ahead of this. Thank you.
Yeah, just saying, in relation to, I'm sorry, that I suspect, as you probably surmise, that, that total for this year will probably be the new floor for years ahead until or unless we see a change in the trend that we're seeing now.
Alderwoman Larson.
I just had a question on the fact numbers that you had. So many on the waiting list. Would funds alone get them off the list? Would, would the rest of your organization be able to handle that? Is, is money the only thing that's stopping this?
Yes. Money is the, is the roadblock right now.
Okay.
We have people capacity. We have volunteer capacity. So it's just funding.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Smith.
Alderman Larson's question. Our LaSalle Com operation handles 550 meals a day with the same amount of staff, and they have the capacity probably to 700 or more. So we have capacity, speaking of VAC, it's just literally dollars. And, and let's throw in the cost of food lately, so.
Oh, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
And again, as we all read in the background, this will be a, an application process by all the organizations that have, that would greatly appreciate some additional funding this year and will follow the same guidelines and same process that we did last time. Any other comments or questions? So I'm, heads nodding that city manager can bring this back to us with an increase as a resolution or an ordinance?
It'd be an ordinance.
Ordinance, okay.
Yeah.
All right, we should be able to do that by next meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Awesome. All right.
Thank you.
All right, sounds good.
We'll do it by, in 48 hours if you want.
And I heard you, Alderman Smith, that you would abstain from a vote that might involve Voluntary Action Center, absolutely. All right, moving on to consideration number two, a proposal to revise Chapter 23 Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, Section 7.18.07, other development restrictions, and to permit tasting rooms in locally licensed cannabis dispensaries. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Carlson, seconded by Alderman Powell. Also, we do have representatives from Exaleaf here to answer any additional questions we might have, but before that, city manager, I don't know if you want to kick it off or?
Or Nikia might want to.
Nikia, do you want to?
Nikia Macadoo, Sydney.
Would you rather just answer questions or do you have anything prepared you wanted to talk about?
I can say a few words.
Please, come on up.
Okay. Okay. Good evening. Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. Thank you for hearing our request this evening. It was about two years ago that I stood before you asking to open DeKalb's first dispensary. Our doors officially opened 1.5 years ago, a year and a half, and we are still going strong. The community has embraced our dispensary and the local government have been, and they have been great supporters. We thank you for supporting our vision and providing safe, tested, legal cannabis products to the community. We don't take this responsibility lightly and we are constantly looking for ways that we can educate and inform our customers. In 2024, we served over 87,000 customers. We sold over 150,000 products. There's still more work to be done. Education is paramount in our organization and the reason we ventured into this business. As nurses, we are passionate about making sure our customers have a clear understanding about the products we sell and how they can be used safely and effectively. We have completed a new space at our dispensary that we hope will serve this very purpose, allowing customers to sample a small amount of product and teaching our patrons how to safely use our products. The four main goals we hope to achieve by having this new space at our dispensary include customer education, a safe place for people to try and taste products, improve customer experience. Cannabis products are not cheap. This allows our customers to try before they buy. Customer service, that would allow customers to have a more engaging experience, taste and sample products directly from product vendors and cultivators. Vendors are able to offer medicated products to customers at a, at a consumption site and talk directly to the customer about what experience they can expect, how to use the products properly, and the benefits of cannabis. Customers are also happy to sample the products and decide which products they like before purchasing. Education. We hope to offer educational services to customers about cannabis products, proper use of cannabis devices, health benefits, and broaden the overall knowledge of how to safely consume as well as serve as a means to further decrease the stigmatization surrounding cannabis use, increase positive presence within the community, and propel forward new and unique marketing initiatives across the industry. There's a lot of confusion surrounding cannabis and products sold in dispensaries versus hemp, Delta 8 and Delta 9 sold at gas stations and convenience stores, right here in DeKalb. This confusion about the differences between cannabis and hemp leads to a misuse of cannabis because of the misleading dosing information, underage purchases at these sites, and the lack of regulation of the hemp industry. This space will provide a safe place for people to try safe, regulated law, in a law-abiding environment. I'm sorry. This place, this will, this space will allow people to consume in a safe, regulated, and law-abiding environment. There are not many places for residents or those that reside in college dorms, apartment, or rented property to safely consume in a private space. This is a relaxing social space for customers to relax and have fun, and that's really our goal as far as making it a social experience. This fosters a legal market. This space provides an opportunity to engage with customers about the importance of choosing the legal market for cannabis, current laws, consumption limits, and responsible use, and it reduces the stigma associated with regular use of cannabis. This is also meant to support the Illinois market. Many customers are opting to go to cheaper markets like Michigan and Missouri. These markets offer cheaper prices at lower quality and take tax dollars out of Illinois. It is estimated that Illinois has lost approximately $1 billion to Michigan and Missouri because customers are choosing to travel to, for cheaper prices and less tax. Customers that have an area to consume are more likely to purchase at that onsite dispensary and keep those tax dollars locally. Just a little bit of market research about sampling in general. Sixty percent of people take part in food and beverage sampling. Eighty-eight percent of people would not have purchased the product without sampling at first. Fifty-eight percent of people would tell their friends and family about the new products they discovered through sampling. Eighty-seven percent of people said that in-store sampling improved their shopping experience, and 95% said they are encouraged to try new products. Our customers pay a lot for these products and they walk out of the door and all they see is packaging. I brought a few samples of the packaging we offer. Sometimes they purchase products they've never tried before. They don't necessarily know how to use them. Our budtenders do the best that they can to teach them about these products at the counter, but again, we are legally not allowed to open products in the store. And so that leaves them with purchasing really expensive things that they don't necessarily know how to use until they get home. Oh, thank you. So this is just a few examples. These are product, obviously, displays. There's nothing in them. No worries. Just some of the packaging that we use. So you can see that there's a lot of, you know, customers that come in, this is all that they see. They have no idea of how it tastes, how it smells. They have nothing, know nothing about the products until they get home. This is not just about consumption. It's about education, public safety, and community engagement. We want to create a space where residents can not only enjoy cannabis responsibly, responsibly, but can also feel informed and welcomed in doing so. We believe that DeKalb has the opportunity to be a leader in this space by creating a regulated, educational, and community-focused elevation tasting lounge, one that respects the law, supports the local economy, and gives our residents the tools to make informed decisions about cannabis use. Thank you again for your time, your support, and for considering this next step in our vision, in our shared vision of a safe, informed, and thriving cannabis community.
Would you mind, Alderman Walker, if city manager did his part? Okay, city manager?
Thank you, mayor.
Then I'll hit you first.
Thank you, Nikia. I would have introduced Nikia as a, as a principal with Exaleaf, but you did that pretty much on your own. Thank you for doing that. So what specifically is before the council tonight is not pros and cons of a particular kind of cannabis and so forth, but currently, under the, the city's codes, in particular, the Unified Development Ordinance, which bears on what can be done in, in this particular dispensary, it says that people who wish to smoke, inhale, or consume cannabis cannot do so on the property. So this is an amendment to the UDO that would be required. If, if you want to pursue this, then we'll bring back an ordinance that would make that change. The, the question, more practically, is, is this something you want to permit? And the, the management and, and the, the ownership of this particular dispenser, dispensary has been very responsible, very forthcoming with us. This is a good way to, I think, start a consideration of something like this. We'd be working with partners that seem to appreciate your circumstances and your concerns, just as we are trying to appreciate theirs. I want to make it very clear, and I think it's mostly clear to people in the community, but just in case it's not, there are no inhaled products that would be allowed to be smoked in this particular room. These are ingested. But there's no HVAC system to remove smoke and the like, or, or just the odor in a way that either would not bother people immediately outside the building or people inside the building. So these are ingestible types of cannabis products. And so this is before you for conversation and direction.
Alderman Walker.
Yeah, he pretty much answered it.
Okay.
Did you want us to try some?
Any, any other comments? Alderwoman Larson.
Well, this comes at a very perfect time for me because I have been fighting chronic pain to the point that I've had to have major surgery. And with adult children giving me advice about what kind of cannabis products might help my chronic pain, I've had a couple of doozy experiences that I'd rather not. And so to have something, and I look at back to what the gentleman before was talking about, the age of our population right now. I'm sure I'm not the only one with chronic pain here. And to have a place where it's like, oh, I don't have to buy a whole thing that might take me into La La Land, but can actually let me function pain-free, I think that'd be wonderful. I'd be all over this. So, yeah.
Yes, Solomon Verbic.
City Attorney Rose, wouldn't this have a home in Chapter 38? In other words, the intoxicating liquors chapter we're talking about, intoxicating products, right? Is that something we could just, I guess, modify to accommodate this?
Yeah, we'd have to change our, our UDO. As the city manager said, we'd have to go through the text amendment process because our UDO right now prohibits cannabis dispensaries like the, the, the Speaker's dispensary from ingesting the product onsite. So that would have to be changed. That would have to be a requirement. The, there is Section 52, which is our morals and conduct section, which prohibits the possession and use of cannabis in certain circumstances. I don't believe that that would have to actually be amended because it prohibits it, except if it's otherwise allowed under our code. And if we had changed the UDO, it would be allowed. But in terms of intoxicating liquors in Chapter 38, that speaks, doesn't speak to cannabis specifically.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, how about heads nodding that we can bring this forward as an ordinance and get this modified? All right. All right, I'm seeing it looks like unanimous consent to bring this forward.
May I ask just a procedural question?
Yeah.
So I, I had two options here. I could bring this forward as a consideration and then if, and, and obviously the public gets to know about the topic beforehand and listen to the council speak. People can speak from the floor. It serves as a first reading and, and the other option would have been to just bring it up as an ordinance on first reading, but then we'd hold it over typically for a second reading, either at the next meeting or one of the upcoming meetings. So which, what do you prefer in these instances where we're talking about a change in an ordinance that has some wider implications?
It's gonna, it's gonna have to go through the text amendment process for the UDO, which will require?
We'd, we'd have to do that. All I'm saying is that sometimes you can do that on, in the, in the case of several ordinances, if you had to, if we wanted to do 38, but we don't need to. But, so you either do it, two readings on an ordinance change, textual change, or you do a consideration and then you do, at a next meeting, an ordinance change.
I usually default to efficiencies. And for me, bringing it as an ordinance gives us the opportunity to waive a second reading if we want to, just to move forward on something, especially if there's no public opposition to it. Some things do require, I believe, consideration if we're just sitting around discussing it, seeing if it's something we want to do. Like, I think the, some of the tobacco stuff that we brought forward is helpful. Counsel, any guidance for the city manager? I think, I think it depends.
Let's get it done.
Yeah, I just heard, let's get it done.
Good. I think either way, you have two sittings.
Potentially, yep. Yep. This guarantees two sittings, though.
And then the evolution of then, next steps for businesses that do want to smoke in their businesses, as is occurring in other locations in Illinois. Do we take care of that in this step or will that be something additionally, in addition later?
It's already, it's already taken, yep. It's already taken care of in the building code. So if you're going to have so many CFMs of, of smoke, you're going to have to evacuate it from the building. So it's already defined. But in this case, that's not part of the proposal.
Right. Thank you.
Any others? All right, looked like heads nodding. Bring it back. Sound good? Is that all you need, city manager?
Yes, thank you.
All right, you all do not have to stay for the rest of the meeting. You can head on up back home. We know you're busy people. Thanks for the wonderful background and explanation and keep up the great work. I hear nothing but great things from people that visit your establishment and the staff that they interact with. So thank you very much.
You bet.
You bet. Have a great night now.
Thank you.
All right, then. All right, then, moving on to resolutions, Agenda Item J. Resolution 2025-055, authorizing a third amendment to the land lease and solar easement agreement with DeKalb's Taylor Solar LLC Sunvest. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And I believe Mr. Dulcet is in the back, okay, representing DeKalb Taylor Solar or Sunvest in this particular item. He's the vice president of project development. Bill cannot be here tonight. So this looks somewhat familiar to you. We've been talking about the different steps in order to get to the point where we have a project that's operable and the city's in a position to realize the annual rent that was one of the inspirations for doing this project in the first place. And there have been a lot of setbacks along the way, many of them at the state level, slower processes than anticipated. We've been partnering with Sunvest to this point. We're getting very close. You can see that a lot of the construction's been done. There is, in our development agreement with the company, something called a development term, and then there's an operating term. Once the operating term begins, then we get closer to that payday for the annual lease payment. And previously, that was supposed to be at the end of June. The request is to go to the end of the year. Realistically, the project will not be able to open and be open and operating at the end of June, be sometime into the fall, most likely. And so the request has been, could they get a six-month, a final six-month extension to the lease? And that's what's before you tonight. We've recommended this at the staff level. We're very close. It happens that the whole annual rent of $91,200 would be due on February 15th. We don't have to wait till the end of 2026, so it seems like it's a reasonable request and we're recommending it to you tonight.
Counsel, questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Resolution 2025-055 passes. All right, for the next six, I want to do something a little different, is I'd love to entertain a motion to pass these in omnibus fashion, and I will read all six when I request the motion for that. To be clear, just so we all understand, they're all part of the same conversation, and the city manager is going to address all of them in his comments. It's just more efficient, rather than doing this one by one, we could just pass them all in one sitting. So with that, I would take a motion to approve... Do I have to read the descriptions, too?
Sure.
Okay. So I have to, or I take a motion to approve in omnibus fashion, Resolution 2025-056, authorizing a supplemental professional construction engineering services agreement with Hapton, Lenzini, and Renwick Incorporated for the widening and reconstruction of Peace Road in an amount not to exceed $279,475. And Resolution 2025-057, authorizing an amendment to the joint funding agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for the reconstruction of Peace Road to increase the city's local share of construction costs from $2 million to $2,011,500. And Resolution 2025-058, requesting Illinois Department of Transportation authorization to appropriate motor fuel tax funds in the amount of $545,500 for the Peace Road Fairview widening project. And Resolution 2025-059, authorizing a supplemental professional construction engineering services agreement with Hapton, Lenzini, and Renwick Incorporated for the replacement of the bridges at North First Street and Lucinda Avenue in an amount not to exceed $161,020. And Resolution 2025-060, authorizing an amendment to the joint funding agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for the replacement of bridges at North First Street and Lucinda Avenue to increase the city's local share of construction costs from $1,121,000 to And Resolution 2025-061, requesting Illinois Department of Transportation authorization to appropriate motor fuel tax funds and the remaining Rebuild Illinois funds for a total allocation of $800,000 for the North First Street and Lucinda Avenue Bridge projects. Can I have a motion to approve, or to bring all six of those in omnibus fashion to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Carlson. City manager.
Thank you, and thank you for agreeing to do that. We last talked about this about a month ago. On April 28th, the city manager gave a report on where we stood with respect to our motor fuel tax fund, that's Fund 210. There was projected imbalance in that fund because of several things, higher-than-expected closeout costs that were associated with the two bridge projects that were finally closed in terms of construction in 2024, and then also the Peace Road Fairview widening project. The concerns that we had were also shared at the state level. There were some outstanding invoices and so forth that, obviously, because the State Department of Transportation is very much involved with us in a partnership when it comes to the sharing of motor fuel tax monies and also some Build Illinois monies, they had to be satisfied that we were doing the right thing. So there are three categories that we had to deal with, and each of those two categories, the bridges and Peace Road. One is where we stood with the engineering services, because we use consulting engineers in both projects. Two, where we stood with construction costs and where they delivered to our satisfaction. And then finally, where we stood with the state of Illinois in terms of those authorizing resolutions that you deal with when we're dealing with state funds, particularly motor fuel tax funds, and where there may be, say, an award of a bid and a little bit more spent in a contingent fashion, and that resolution has to be revised at our level, so it can be revised at the state level, and there is a process for that. So this is, because the jobs went over several years, and even several years before them, there was conversation about what the projects might cost, whether it had to do with preliminary budget numbers or estimates of available funds and so forth. It was quite complicated and layered. So I've tried to lay this out for you in six steps, and in each case of the bridges, there's three resolutions, and in case of Peace Road, there are three. We have had, in the last month, many conversations with the state of Illinois, with individual firms that were involved that have invoices that need to be completed. I want to thank our Director of Financial Services, Susan Hauman, and Megan Shaland, who is our senior accountant, and also Andy Rye. When I ran out of patience with conversations at whatever level, Andy came in, was also a key part of this, and I owe them debt of gratitude. So the sum of all this is, and you've seen the numbers, do you want me to run down some of these, or?
Whatever you think.
I'll just say this. We moved $1.5 million out of our general fund reserve to the Fund 210 on April 28th. And that's where it is. Because of that, we were able to continue the conversation with the state of Illinois. They had to know that we had the funds to complete this process. They're satisfied. And I also want to thank Steve Sherry at the level of, the district level of IDOT, who was very helpful in all this. Okay, let's take them one at a time, and I'll just, I'll go through this, and if you want to go, if you want to go really deep in this, I've got all the stuff here for you. Peace Road widening project, the resolution, the first resolution in that omnibus list, number 56, we'll call it, that dealt with the engineering services that needed to be fulfilled in terms of funding. That number came to a little over $33,000. The other out-of-pocket cost was not very much either. It was the resolution to increase the previous limit for the appropriation of funds for the actual construction on Peace Road, and that was about $11,500. And then there's a large number that is associated with a supplemental resolution that goes to the state level, but that's not our out-of-pocket. That's to increase the resolution to authorize the project at a higher number, and that was $545,000. That number was created through a lot of conversation with the state of Illinois. The previous resolution had aimed lower, and this is where it needs to be. There is no dollar up or down from this, it will be acceptable. The bridges. Resolution 59, 60, and 61. 59, a little bit larger number that relates to reimbursement of services for engineering activity, both in construction engineering and since the job's been done, that's $161,020. Then there's a resolution for the increased costs owing to the utility delays associated with the two bridge projects, $461,357.15. It was a candy bar somebody got somewhere along the way. Finally, to adjust the, by a supplemental resolution, what the overall allocation of MFT and Rebuild Illinois monies ought to be, we increased that by $800,000, but that's not out-of-pocket. The total out-of-pocket that I've described to you is $666,885.39. So that's a little bit less. We were at 710, I believe, when I came before you, but this will clear the slate. What we do from here will obviously be something we'll look very carefully at, and be in probably more regular contact with our counterparts and partners at the state of Illinois, and lots of lessons learned here. But this is something I hope you will approve, and we feel that we'll be able to close a book on this, these particular projects.
We discussed last time, too, that there was a, whatever you call it, an ask from the state of Illinois to be able to reimburse for some of the expenses.
When was the last time?
No, April 28th, I think you described that we were asking for a refund. That still hasn't played out yet.
No, no. But we had, we had to settle this. Now, anything beyond this, it's great, it'll go right into the general fund reserve, basically. It's, some of that money, the $1.5 million, I'm hoping we're going to be able to bring back, put it into our Fund 400, which is our general capital fund. We don't, we have local motor fuel tax dollars there, not state dollars. And we use that for a variety of things. Because currently, we are paying for an interim system for engineering supervision and design work, we're going to need to pop up a couple of line items and change a few others.
Counsel, questions or comments? Hearing none. Real quick, too, on just in current road construction, Memorial Day ran into a family from the Knowles, and they were incredibly appreciative of how great their streets look and how great they are to drive on. So all these projects that we're doing, albeit complicated, but well-needed. Yes?
I'll just say this, I'll promise this, he probably will decline the opportunity, but there is a gentleman who, at the end of this year, is likely to make, likely to hang it up, but he may not. I hope he does it, because he worked for Fairgram, they have the construction engineering responsibility for all the street maintenance that's going on, the 4.5 million, and it's across many streets, as you well know. And then also the intersection reconfiguration and the roundabout at Normal and Lucinda. And he's back and, he's on the move all day long, but he has a great knack of not only knowing what needs to be done, but communicating with all the various trades and others' neighbors, and of course NIU in this case. So when we're all done and he's still standing, I want to bring him here for a bow.
Absolutely.
Just one matter procedurally. You have a motion in a second for the omnibus vote?
Mm-hmm.
That's just to consider, you know, the items two through seven in an omnibus. That vote has to be unanimous to consider it, and then you have a second vote on whether you're going to approve or not approve. That vote does not have to be unanimous, so.
So, okay, but then, the second one, well, let's do the first one first.
Do the first one first.
Let me do roll call first on this one. So roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Now, what is...
Now, you're just having a motion to approve the omnibus vote that you just took.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And that does not have to be unanimous, but it needs a normal motion.
All right, I would take a motion to pass the omnibus vote that we just conducted.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Powell. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
All right, it has passed. Real quick on that, so just procedurally, I get it. I made a request to pass them all in omnibus fashion. We should have done a second, or motion a second hand of roll call then.
It doesn't quite matter what you do.
And then I could have brought it to the floor.
Yeah.
Okay. I understand, though. All right. We just don't do enough of those. All right, moving on to Resolution 2025-062, authorizing the award of a contract to D. Ryan Tree and Landscaping Service LLC for hazardous tree removal and tree pruning in an amount not to exceed $230,300. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Carlson, or moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Carlson. City manager.
Thank you. I think a key ingredient in this particular item is Andy Rye looking for grant opportunities. The Public Works Department saw one, a very handsome grant that was available through Morton Arboretum back in November, and we went for it. We were awarded $255,300 for a, quote, "tree equity grant for disadvantaged communities", unquote. I don't know whether the disadvantaged part is something we want to holler about, but we are very happy with the grant. And that allowed us to, in our particular grant request, remove this year 40 hazardous trees and trim 738 parkway trees. So our forestry crew is going to be very busy. We had to go out for bid, obviously. We got three responses. The lowest responsible bid was from D. Ryan Tree and Landscape, in the amount of $230,300. So what's before you tonight is a resolution that would authorize the award of the contract to D. Ryan Tree and Landscaping Service in that amount, and we are looking forward to the completion of this. The department and the city have been moving steadily, not in great leaps, but steadily toward a comprehensive enhancement of our communities, I wouldn't say forests, but certainly parkway trees, open public spaces, where we are hoping to allow the sicker and failing trees to be removed and the enhancement of those younger trees, maybe, that are looking for space and light and air to make us a more handsome-looking community.
Alderwoman Larson.
This was brought up at the Environmental Commission last month, and because it's through Morton Arboretum, they have very strict guidelines now that we have to follow, because I know, especially with some other utilities, when they prune, it's pretty aggressive because they're trying to protect wires and stuff like that. But these, on the parkway and everything, will have a different methodology that they have to follow as part of the grant.
Okay, good to know. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Resolution 2025-062 passes. Moving on to Gen. Item K. Ordinance's second reading, we have none. Gen. Item L, first reading, number one, Ordinance 2025-025, approving a special-use permit to allow the construction of a new public swimming pool facility at 1403 Sycamore Road, DeKalb Park District. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Powell. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if we're introducing him tonight for the first time to the council, Paul Zeppisar, who is executive director... who is the executive director of DeKalb Park District. And sitting to his left is Steve Nelson, architect extraordinaire. He's dabbled in some political positions, such as school board and so forth, over time, and so he understands that sometimes there's that little, little rule that can push a project toward where we are tonight. The site where the pool is in process of being recreated is zoned, single-family residential. Now, you can have a pool in a single-family residential, but you've got to have a special use permit. So you've got some idea, looking at your background, at, in a graphic way, what the new complex will look like. There will be an approximate swimmer load, I'd never heard of this before, of 710 people. That would be up to 1,000, even bigger than I thought. Doing all those things. Okay. I'll have to get a new suit, right? There's going to be a zero-depth entry pool, which is really cool, and a lot of, a lot of features. The estimated cost of the work is about $14 million, and the, when are we expected to see this all completed in '26, I think, right?
Hopefully, by June first.
Hopefully, okay. Good. Well, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this on May 19th and unanimously recommended your approval of this. We support their recommendation to you.
Counsel, questions or comments? If we end up waiving second reading, can you get it done this year?
It's a hard bargain, man.
All right. I would, go ahead and roll call, please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Ordinance 2025-025 has passed on first reading, and as always, to help expedite, I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Powell, seconded by Alderman Carlson. Any comments and questions on waiving second reading for ordinance 2025-025? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2025-025. Thank you so much, gentlemen. Really looking forward to the project. It's going to be fantastic. All right, moving on to agenda item M, council member reports. Alderman Smith, you want to kick us off?
Really, the only thing Target is really moving along with her construction. Do you know how far along they are, they're built?
About. You know, their original plan was to be done by the fall, so.
Yeah, and then Skechers is getting ready to open, and just a lot of building, or a lot of inquiries out that way, I guess, so that's a good thing for the city. That's it.
All right. Alderman Powell?
No report.
Alderman Walker?
No report.
Alderman Verbic?
No report.
Alderman Carlson?
I have three. I'll try to make it quick. The first one was, a couple weeks ago, was Sullivan's 80th anniversary celebration. Thank you, Alderman Smith, for reminding me. It was great. Lots of people were there, and the Sullivan family, we all know them, many of the boys are on law enforcement, they're just a great family. That's why they're around for 80 years, is how they run it. It was great. The last time that I was in council, I mentioned I was at a birthday party for Mary Simons, who turned 90 years old two weeks ago. I'm sorry to say that I got a call last night, and she passed away last night. And for all of you that didn't know Mary Simons, 90 years, I knew her like a second mom. She used to invite everyone over for spaghetti dinner, for the football players. She would just get behind, she was the campaign manager for Lori Grubbs, who's Circuit Clerk, who I also graduated with and went to Little John School with. Just an amazing woman, amazing mother, and I wouldn't be here without Mary Simons. The last is yesterday, Memorial Day. Boy, did I get into it. 6:30 in the morning at the mayoral breakfast, then the clock ceremony, then the parade, then Elwood House. Police Chief Byrd was there, Bill Nicholas, the city manager, all these people, and then AMVets. And I was telling Police Chief Byrd on the way in just how much everyone was so positive, and they kept thanking me for being on this council. I said, "No, that's Perkins. That wasn't me. It was a bigger bald guy." Anyway, it was just so great to hear all that positivity about the city and what I'm walking into as alderman. So I just want to end it on that, what a great weekend and a great last two weeks, other than missing Mrs. Simons.
Alderwoman Larson?
No report.
Real quick, been on the phone with multiple state representatives, state senators, lobbyists around the Biometric Information Privacy Act, and there's an energy omnibus package that they're discussing right now. All these things make it more difficult for data centers to do business here in the city of DeKalb, but of course, the state of Illinois. So really been trying to advocate as much as I possibly can for modifications to some legislation, as well as elimination of some proposed legislation. As you all know, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Illinois Municipal League. The Illinois Municipal League penned their name to a letter to the governor and all the leaders in the state, expressing their opposition to these as well. So really trying to help move the needle there. Alderman Carlson's right, Memorial Day was great, the mayor's breakfast, the ceremony at the clock. I would highly recommend all of us coming out on that day. The ceremony at the clock is just, it's just a, it's just a really good moment. And then we have the parade that ended up at Elwood House and had some great speakers there. Retired Colonel Jose Jacquez, who's on the school board, was the keynote. He did a really great job. City manager Nicholas and I were also at the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District, talking with some residents of some properties that are not in corp, not in the incorporated city of DeKalb, they're in the unincorporated part. And I know we brought it up at council meetings a couple times about there's properties out there that are surrounded by the city of DeKalb, but yet not in the city of DeKalb. So we started having a conversation with a lot of them of what that might look like in the future going forward. Also, went to, there was a police memorial that they do every year, and that was on Saturday, I believe, Chief, Saturday? And it's just a moment where they read the names of all the officers, both civilian and sworn officers, in the DeKalb Police Department, who are no longer with us. And it's just a way of remembering their names by doing that. So that ties really well around this time of year with Memorial Day as well. So that was a great ceremony, and I always liked going to that one. Also went to a ribbon cutting for Infinity Truck Sales. They're out on north or south First. That is a huge, huge, huge operation. They do truck sales as well as repair. Of course, we talked to them about, come on, Petros, a truck, gas station, what do you call them? Trucks, truck stop. Oh, my gosh. But to have someone that can do semi-truck sales and semi-truck repair with everything that we've got going on, was really great to see them opening up. But also, we were the sixth community they looked for, locating to, and they expressed how difficult it was all over the western suburbs trying to work with other communities, and they came here, and we made it so easy to work with, and they were literally gushing about how nice it was to do business in the city of DeKalb, which is great to hear, and I commend city staff for that as well. We also really, it was interesting, we met with Farrar Candy Company, some of their representatives, and Farrar is really looking to make a larger impact in the city of DeKalb. And they wanted to sit down, talk with city manager Nicholas and myself, get a little bit of the lay of the land, the nonprofits that are out there, some of the community need, what's the community look like? And I thought that was really cool, that they're stepping up now to be good corporate citizens and figure out how they can make a larger impact in the city of DeKalb. And that's all I got. City manager, how about you?
Two quick things. I want to thank Alderwoman Larson for her dedication, and I want to thank Eddie Executive Assistant Ruth Scott for her perseverance.
Yes, definitely. All right, moving on then to agenda item N, executive session, we have none, which gets us to agenda item O, adjournment. I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nate, same sign. We are adjourned.